I don't have a gavel. My gavel's missing. Please stand for the pledge allegiance called me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Those are approved. Next, we'll move to persons wishing to address the school board. Everyone who signed up today is on non-agenda items. You'll each get five minutes. Looks like it's three different topics. I'll start with the person who's on top here, Chad Bishop. Please stand on the mic and state your address. And board member Parker will time you and give you a heads up when you're running low on time. I think one minute. She can just give you a hand. She'll just give your hands up when it's about one minute left. Is that okay?
Yell at me. My apologies.
Oh, Dan, can, can, and we have.
If you want to teach me how to do it.
You bet. Well, we just, we should always make sure I'm going to trust you that it's appropriate. We need to talk about it's appropriate because, I mean, I know you are and I trust you. But like if people just start showing up, so we just, in the future, would you show either Bev or someone what you're going to put on there just so we have.
You bet.
You bet. Thank you.
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. In my last statement to this body in 1013 of this year, I asked that you consider the concepts of double think, the memory hole and newspeak as described by George Orwell in his dystopian science fiction novel 1984. In that statement, I listed the terms diversity, equity and inclusion as potential examples of modern day newspeak. Why would I do that? Merriam-Webster has two, what they call essential definitions for the word diversity and another two full definitions. My point in mentioning this is that depending on who uses a word and in what context, it can have different meanings. Something I think we all understand. What I heard during the demographic report presented during the last meeting was the stated desire for students in our district to see a district staff that looks more like them. I can understand this sentiment as we all would like to be able to look towards leadership in our community who we feel represent us and with whom we can better identify. By itself, this concept seems unreasonable and noble. In this context, I interpret and understand your use of the word diversity to mean we see all of the difference and beautiful people who have made a home in Sioux Falls and we welcome their children into our schools. We see their race, their religion and their cultures, and we invite them to truly become a part of our community. Many of them come to us as refugees and specifically refugees of war. Some come as immigrants, both documented and undocumented. Regardless, as educators, we welcome them and try to help them be the best people, the best South Dakotans, the best Americans that they can be. We don't ask that they forget where they come from or who they are. Nor do we ask them to accept everything that we do in our culture, but we ask them to find a way to be respectable and tolerant as we learn to live together. In this understanding, we hope we do our best to train them up and educate them so they may become teachers earning that title. So they can educate and welcome whoever else may come to find a home in Sioux Falls. Would that be an acceptable definition of diversity that we could all agree upon, at least in spirit? So the concern that many have is that some are operating with a different definition and understanding of the word diversity. I give the district the benefit of the doubt in the definition they are using, but I would ask for you to explicitly define it along with the other words that I mentioned. In an op ed dated August 12th of this year, Professor Dorian Abbott says, "The words diversity, equity and inclusion sound just and are often supported by well-intentioned people, but their effects are the opposite of noble sentiments. Most importantly, equity does not mean fair and equal treatment. Diversity, equity and inclusion seeks to increase the representation of some groups through discrimination against members of other groups." The underlying premise of DEI is that any statistical difference between the group representation on campus and national averages reflects systemic injustice and discrimination by the university itself." He's speaking to higher ed here. "The magnitude of the distortions is significant for some job searches discrimination rises to the level of implicitly or explicitly excluding applicants from certain groups. DEI violates the ethical and legal principle of equal treatment. It entails treating people as members of a group rather than as individuals, repeating the mistake that made possible the atrocities of the 20th century. It requires being willing to tell an applicant, I will ignore your merits and qualifications and deny you admission because you belong to the wrong group. And I have defined a more important social objective that justifies doing so. It treats persons as merely means to an end, giving primacy to a statistic over the individuality of the human being." Professor Abbott's definition of diversity is likely similar to that defined in responding to social justice rhetoric cheat sheet I cited last meeting. Diversity, social justice warriors, what they mean is "An identity-based approach to society includes only those who agree with social justice, which is a violation of individual identity enforced intellectual conformity, political quotas, an attack on merit and a form of soft bigotry." This is the definition that many of the people you serve are starting to assume is meant when they hear the word used in the context of education or even employer hiring practices. So please explain to the families that you serve what you mean when you say we continue to value diversity. Does this mean you will discriminate against better qualified candidates to hire purely based upon the color of their skin? Another reason this rhetoric from the political activist gives us pause. In my statement on 913 of this year, I shared. Thank you.
Next, I believe it's Amy Brewer. I couldn't read the word. It's B R I or E. I'm sorry. Yeah, yes, sorry. Would you state your name and address? Thank you.
It's Amy Bruner.
Bruner, thank you.
Sorry about my terrible penmanship. That probably didn't do very well on that one. I was in grade school either, so. My address is 3420 South Alpine Avenue. And tonight I'm going to talk us a little bit about a couple of different topics. I'll stay within my five minutes. First of all, I want to address a recent analysis that you may or may not have seen in the Argus Leader. It was last week. It was titled, quote unquote, "The Analysis, COVID-19 in South Dakota Schools Improving This Year When Last Year They Weren't." According to the analysis, which used South Dakota Department of Health data, the 2020 school year COVID numbers were greater than the 2021 numbers at this time in the school last year. Cases among K-12 students and staff have fallen each of the last four weeks. According to the article, it says, quote unquote, "By now, it's obvious that infection among school-aged population is dependent on what is happening in the wider community and not on school masks." My point here is really to acknowledge your hard work on that and to acknowledge the hard work of the overall community. You guys have really faced some difficult decisions as have all of us as parents, but the school board has respected our, our rights as parents to make choices in these matters. And for now, it looks like things are trending in the right direction with regard to COVID. And I just wanted to thank you, as I had done before, for supporting and respecting family choice in this matter. Second topic I just want to bring up today is something that you've probably been hearing about from the national media. I'll just quickly summarize. In September, the National School Board Association, to which I believe the Sioux Falls School District dollars, to which Sioux Falls School District dollars roll up, colluded with the White House to craft a letter for the National School Board Association asking for help mitigating threats against board members, teachers and administrators. In their letter, the president of the NSBA, Viola Garcia, and interim executive director and CEO Chip Slaven, beg for assistance, quote unquote, "On behalf of our state associations and the more than 90,000 school board members who govern our country's 14,000 local public school districts." After that letter was sent to the White House, Department of Justice Attorney General Merrick Garland issued a memorandum that instructed the FBI to take the lead on a task force to address threats against school officials, including creating a centralized way to report such threats. So to be clear, as I look at this, the National Association of School Boards, which receives taxpayer dollars in the form of dues and other contributions colluded with the White House to set the wheels in motion that would see the levers of the justice system used to chill speech of parents who want to advocate for their children. But it appears that the NASB has gotten busted. More than 20 states have denounced their actions in the organization and these states either have or are threatening to withhold funding. So on Friday night, the NSBA issued an apology letter. Now I have kids and I know what happens when consequences start to accumulate and pile up. They backpedal, there's apologies and all of that's to stop the inevitable consequences of being busted. This is blatantly obvious when it comes to the apology made by the National Association of School Boards. They have, they had to do it to try to stop the avalanche that they created, but it's not enough. Sioux Falls taxpayer dollars should not flow up to this organization. It's time for the Sioux Falls School District and Associated School Boards of South Dakota to denounce the actions of the National School Board Association. Their actions clearly show an utter lack of respect for parents and family input. And on one more interesting development that I saw today through the Washington Free Beacon, apparently the National School Board Association President Viola Garcia, whose signature was on that initial letter, was appointed on October 13th by the U.S. Department of Education to the National Assessment Governing Board, which develops the tests used to track student achievement across the country. Now, I don't certainly understand what all that appointment means, but it's interesting timing for an appointment and it certainly should raise some questions. So I would encourage you to denounce the actions of the NASB and cease any further dues or funding through the Associated School Boards of South Dakota to the NASB. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And finally, we have Cole Heisey.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cole Heisey. I'm a Sioux Falls resident. I live at 123 South Duluth Avenue, apartment three. I hope you're all doing well. Before I begin with this contentious, though pressing issue, I want to thank this board for its general openness and responsiveness to the public, something not exactly reflected across the United States this past year. With that said, I'm here to speak because many of us in the community are wondering the relationship this board will continue to have with the state and National School Boards Association. The inquiry comes in lieu of the recent controversy this month with the NSBA. In a September 9th letter, asked the Biden administration to, quote, "Deal with the growing number of threats of violence and acts of intimidation occurring across the nation," saying moreover, quote, "As these acts of malice, violence and threats against public school officials have increased, the classification of these heinous actions could be equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism and hate crimes," the NSB wrote, though without citing any such incidents. Several days later, after release of this letter, U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland subsequently ordered the FBI to investigate parents protesting at local school board meetings, thereby turning concerned and justifiably angry parents into enemies of the state, indeed into so-called domestic terrorists. Absurd on the face of it, looking more deeply into the matter, begins to make a little bit more sense. It was found that Merrick Garland has a direct financial and familial interest in targeting and intimidating parents with the FBI. For it was found an education textbook company named, namely Panorama Education, was co-founded by USAG Merrick Garland's son-in-law, having contracted with 23,000 public schools and raised $76 million from investors. It just so happens they sell a critical race theory-based curriculum. Given many of the parents at these meetings are there to protest against critical race theory being taught in schools, among other things, it doesn't take much of the imagination to see why there's a conflict of interest besides an ideological one. Seen from this angle, the AG's contact makes more sense, but it has set alarm bells off, as one might suppose. As for the National School Board Association, it has taken a hostile posture against concerned parents making their voices heard. It has become grossly partisan and ideological. For these reasons, more than 20 state school board associations have already moved to distance themselves from the NSBA over the letter, with many more local school boards doing the same. As a result of the pushback, the NSBA reversed course and apologized for their controversial letter, calling in President Joe Biden to have parents investigated as, quote, "Domestic terrorists." The newer statement went on to claim that the NSBA deeply valued the voices of the parents that they had previously referred to as domestic terrorists, writing, quote, "As we reiterated since the letter was sent, we deeply value not only the work of local school boards that make important contributions within our communities, but also the voice of the parents who showed that must continue." but also the voice of the parents who should and must continue to be heard when it comes to decisions about their children's education, health, and safety," the apology letter said. If you ask me, that is quite a different tone and set of ideas from the first letter. Let's be real, though. Some things you can't come back from. And this letter they sent to the White House, which was then taken up by the USAG and FBI, is one of those matters. It was only after they were excoriated by the public and losing that they reversed their course. Their internal culture, that would even allow such a letter to be written and actually sent to the White House, and their actions are reprehensible and should be condemned by any upright elected official or board. There should be consequences. So we ask and want to know how much this board pays in taxpayer funds as dues to this association. Would you consider rethinking your involvement with this organization after its recent deplorable response to the democratic process? The next biggest school district in the state, that is Rapid City, their school board is voting on the matter within the week, deciding the fate of their relationship with the association, basically voting whether to leave the South Dakota State School Boards Association. I ask, does this board have similar plans? I want to end by noting something which needs to be reiterated, it seems, more often these days. I direct this at anyone who may be present or hear what I have to say. There appears to be a lack of understanding about how the government works. For example, the governor of Virginia, who's up for election, said that parents shouldn't have a say in their child's education. He's of the sort ignorant about the values and nature of America. Again, one all too common these days. The school board is elected by the parents, by the people. The parents are the authority. The citizens are the authority over the school board and actually overall government in the United States. Let that not be forgotten. In the end, whatever one's feelings are about CRT or masks, there's not a reasonable person who thinks that threatening to prosecute parents who are advocating for the child is anything short of disgraceful. I encourage you to consider this matter serious, seriously, because it indeed is a serious matter. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we as a board typically don't take action or respond to public input because as a governmental entity, since it's not on the agenda, it's not fair to other public people who don't have a chance to comment or vote or any of that type of thing. So just for future reference, and also, we're all open to emails and so forth and have discussion. There's one important fact, I think, regarding the NSBA that should be stated and was not stated. The letter was actually written by the interim president or executive director of the organization. The retraction letter was actually written by the board. And that is because the process was not followed. So that's why there was a tone difference, and there was different language in there. Two different entities writing the letter. And so we are watching and waiting and have had several conversations with our state board to see if some actions will be taken, because we want to follow the process that if this was improperly done that way. Not saying... Because we have not voted on how we agree or disagree on this and that, but I just want you to know that we are aware of this. We're following it and seeing how this is going to play out. So thank you very much. Now, we have no one on the agenda item, so I'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Onto the Good News Report, Deanne.
Okay, good evening. When in doubt, go to the library. Read books change the world. There is no friend as loyal as a book. These short but impactful quotes remind us of the valuable resource available at the fingertips of our students, referred to oftentimes as the heart of a school, and that is the school library. The South Dakota State Library formally recognizes schools each year with libraries that meet the characteristics of 21st-century school libraries through place, professional, and program. Awards recognize the status of the library as effective, enhanced, or exemplary based on the South Dakota School Library Guidelines, which say that school libraries must provide all learners a collaborative program for learning and teaching, provide all learners a place for both physical and virtual learning environment, provide all learners access to a highly qualified professional for leadership in creating, promoting, and sustaining the program in place. This fall, we're pleased to report that three of our schools, our high schools, all three high schools that were in existence in the past years, Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Washington High Schools, all achieved the exemplary status along with Patrick Henry Middle School. We should note that libraries can apply for this award every three years. And my PowerPoint is not wanting to respond. Seems like there's something every time, right? Libraries can apply for the award every three years. So we currently do have some libraries in our district that are still enjoying the distinction of their three years. They may be in that first year after or the second year after as well. So those school libraries are Robert Frost, Pettigrew, and Sonia Sotomayor. Many more schools have carried the distinction recently, including Discovery Elementary, Harvey Dunn, Oscar Howe, Memorial Middle School, and Edison Middle School, demonstrating that we have exceptional school libraries across the district. In addition to an application, the self-assessment rubric includes 29 essentials, which each have multiple components. And I'm just highlighting a couple of those through here, and I know it's hard to see up there. But some of those examples are promoting reading for academic and personal learning, promoting and sponsoring school events and community library participation, providing flexible and accessible access during, before, and after the school day, supporting library sustainability and growth through budget allocations, employing staff members who participate in building district, state, and/or national curriculum, and cooperating to co-teach with other educators. So 29 different self-assessment points, and then the application also. As you and I have probably all heard throughout, as recently as August, when I was taking some members through Jefferson High School, someone asked if school libraries are dying. Are they going away? Are they a thing of the past? These pictures and these awards go on to show that school libraries are most definitely vibrant, here to stay. They're active, they're not-so-quiet places of learning, where students are welcomed, and all of those who need to find facts are welcomed there along with those who would wish to test theories or just hope to grow their imagination. So we congratulate our school libraries for the most recent distinctions, and our school librarians submitted the photos for this presentation today. Mary Peters at Lincoln High School, Michelle Clayberg at Roosevelt High School, Carrie Smith at Washington High School, and Wendy Nelson at Patrick Henry Middle School. So again, we say congratulations to those librarians. And I'm not sure you can fit a whole lot more students in the library in that picture. You see, that was what was happening at the library today at Washington High School. And it's a great thing to see students actively engaged and enjoying their libraries. So we say thank you and appreciate the work of those who take care of our libraries. Any questions?
I just... Our libraries are amazing, and I just remember my boys, especially in elementary, library day was like their favorite day, that they were able to choose their own books and have that access. And I don't know if the public's aware, but there's a pilot project going on in our schools with the Sioux Falls or Siouxland libraries to give them library cards that are limited use, so that we're going to start that partnership as well, which is great to have that even more access to materials and hopefully get the bug and love of reading in everybody's minds.
I did find a statistic specific to South Dakota. In the 2019-2020 school year, 85% of students checked out at least one book from their school library. But when you average all the books checked out across the state from school libraries, that amounts to 27 books per student. Imagine the learning.
Thank you, Deanne.
Deanne, we do have some librarians here tonight. I'm so sorry.
Thanks for being here.
Where at? Please. No? Okay.
I was like, I know it's not Wendy.
No, I know, I know these folks.
I don't know the other two, though.
Yes, so we're grateful, and they were more than happy to be able to be recognized as part of the report tonight.
Thank you. There were no new conflicts of interest presented. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, items 9A through G. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. We'll go 10A first, Claims to Avera. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto 10B, 1 through 3. Do I have a motion to approve Claims to Sanford Hill?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That... Those carry with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Onto reports to the superintendent, first quarter finance report. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. This is usually the... We do four of these a year, obviously, and this is usually the fastest. We're a fourth of the way through the calendar, our calendar of our fiscal year, but our expenditures in the general fund are only at 15%. In the special ed fund, they're only at 9.4%. And capital is a little bit different. But it's still a fourth of the way spent down, and that's because some of the items we order in the summer to have ready for the beginning of the year. The one area I can... We can really have a fix on kind of where we're headed is our revenues, because we now know our valuation increases and we know our fall enrollment. In the general fund, our fall enrollment was a little short of where... We grew, but we were a little short of where we projected, but our valuations are up, and so the capital fund will be able to offset any shortfall we might have in the state aid formula. SPED fund, we actually know that last spring because the SPED counts are confirmed at that time. So the revenue should be on for the SPED count. And then we go the next quarter. We do the December halfway through, we'll have a better idea, and we'll try to project some expenditures when we meet then. Other than that, I'd stand by for questions.
Just, and for the public, so obviously, this will be online for the reports, so they can go through it, but our past reports are all on there, too, if you ever have questions about that. But with the numbers, we talked about that when we talked about enrollment and so forth, that since now, you know, we had... We were doing so well and predicting now that we need to maybe adjust how we are predicting those numbers so that for our budgeting process...
Yeah, we... So we usually take the second or most conservative number. We do like eight different runs. This year, because we thought there would be maybe some six-year-olds that would show up in kindergarten, whatnot, we did what we call Olympic averaging. We threw out the most... The least, the smallest growth number, and we threw out the highest growth number and averaged the middle, too. But that usually isn't in the bottom one or two or three. So we'll probably go back and project what we do. And it's usually either the most conservative, the second-most conservative, or the third-most conservative.
Yep, because for the public as well, we noticed that our growths were actually in the secondary in the high school and middle school and not in the elementary, so that's...
I think Doug said that... He said it to me after the board meeting, but I think he said a lot of that was open enrollment.
Any other questions for Mr. Bishop? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the first quarter finance report for FY '22?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Anything else? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in... Jinx, exactly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.